Everyone, and to the Burnsville Planning Commission meeting on September 23rd of 2013. Commissioners, welcome.
Thank you.
Staff, welcome to everyone in the audience. I'd like to call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Any changes from commissioners? No? Any changes, staff?
None from staff.
I would look for a motion. I said move. Moved by Commissioner Bradrick, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tahiri. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes five, or all opposed, say no. That passes 5-0. The second item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from September 9th, 2013. Any changes, commissioners? Any changes from staff?
None from staff.
I'd look for a motion.
So move?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tahiri, second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes 5-0. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Pro-Fut Limited Partnership, application for a PUD amendment to allow an interim use permit for open storage and display, and a building addition for the existing RDO equipment facility located at 12500 Dupont Avenue. Mr. Slaney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. This is a public hearing. We're looking at a planned unit development amendment and an interim use permit request. The property owner has applied for both, and seeking a 20-year interim use permit for the existing open storage and display of heavy equipment at the RDO facility. They are at 12500 Dupont Avenue. Here's an aerial photo of the existing site. Office is in this area, existing shop, additional outbuildings, and a freestanding wash bay. As you can see from the image, there's significant amount of vehicles stored outside, two access points off of Dupont, one off of Lady Bird Lane, as well as a significant amount of gravel due to the type of, type and weight of vehicles RDO deals with. It's difficult to keep concrete and bituminous in good shape due to the tracks and the size of the equipment. It gets torn up pretty easily, so we are dealing with existing gravel. Much of that will continue in the future. I'll leave this aerial photo up for one second. The interim use permit also includes, in addition to the existing building, portions of the existing buildings will be demoed, new additions added on, improvements to the site access, the office and visitor parking area will also be improved. The site exists as GIM, which is Gateway Industrial Medium. It is also within the Minnesota River Quadrant, and we'll get to some of those details as we move ahead. There will be remodeling of the existing office space, demolition of 6,300 square feet of the main building, and that will be in this area, removal of just under 10,000 square foot, square feet of the outbuilding, and that would be this area that's removed. Again, RDO has been in operations at this facility for a number of years. They've got a great history in Burnsville and wishing to continue that. They are looking to continue their outdoor sales and display of heavy equipment through an interim use permit. Number of years ago, the zoning for this district changed. It used to be a conditional use permit that would allow outdoor storage. It now exists as a GIM district, which means that outdoor storage and display is an interim use rather than a conditional use. That zoning change took place in 1990, excuse me, 2002. Let me jump to some of these other images. So as you'll recognize from the last image, this building continues out. A portion of that would be removed. 23,000 square feet would be added on. The office, this would become a parts warehouse, some locker room area and things like that. This would become shop. This would remain as ancillary storage, remain as an outbuilding, and the wash bay would also remain. The applicant's looking to stay in Burnsville for the next 20 years. They are a good community partner. They've been successful here. Staff is supportive of keeping them here, and thus reviewing that 20-year interim use permit. That is slightly longer than some of the other interim use permits that we have in the MRQ, most recently reviewed and approved. Excavation and soil improvements, those dates are ending January 1st, 2027. So there was some discussion at staff level, what's the benefit of those additional years, allowing RDO to go out to January 1st, 2034. That would be an additional seven years. What is the benefit? What's the benefit to the city for that? And in discussing with the applicant, they've conceptually agreed to, at the end of those 20 years, while RDO is the owner, they would be removing the buildings from the site and thus leaving it open for primary development. Our concern would be, it's existed as outdoor storage, it's designed for heavy equipment, it's not really designed as a office warehouse or office headquarters, and we feel there's a significant benefit to having those buildings come down at the end of that time period and having a vacant site that RDO could sell or do whatever they would choose to for future redevelopment and put a new use in there. Thus, we are looking at a deadline for the interim use for occupying the site with that heavy equipment ending in 2034. After that time has ended, there would also be an agreement to get those buildings removed from the site. Staff is recommending at this point, March 15th, 2034, to give them a few additional weeks after they vacated the property to remove the buildings. Again, this is not a long, the outdoor storage is not a long-term use in the GIM, so we certainly see this as a benefit, allowing RDO to continue with their plans, their improvements to the site, as well as getting what the city would look for at the end is the ability to redevelop on that property once RDO has basically used up their usable life for that piece of property. Again, that is also consistent with the long-term vision of the MRQ for redevelopment. There are a number of deviations listed in the packet, multiple buildings on the lot, a number of green space and landscape requirements. Again, although this is a interim use, it's a long-term interim use, 20 years. Staff and the applicant work through these to determine what's reasonable. Long-term, we do expect full compliance with these zoning regulations when we have a different user on the property. RDO has been using it as-is for quite a few years. It's consistent with some of the other land uses that are in that area. Staff doesn't have concerns with those requested deviations. Obviously, we see there's a significant benefit with the proposal and the end-use plan. So let me get to some of the details of the project. We talked about the deviations, the timeframes. The site exists as two parcels. They are both platted lots, lots one and two. As part of the process, they have requested on behalf of the city, and this is also a benefit to the PUD, that these two lots be combined to operate as one in the future. With that, it is just under seven acres in size. They are increasing the green space from 15% to 18 and 1/2%. The required amount within the zoning district is 30%. Parking required for the land use and the use as proposed is 47 stalls. The applicant has proposed that with the site plan. And I'll run through some of the improvements that would be most noticeable off of Dupont Avenue. This front parking area is being reconfigured. This driveway exists, is especially wide, and is being curtailed a little bit. Additional green space is being added. There is, exist, there are existing parking stalls that actually sit either within the right-of-way or the required parking setback. Those items are all being resolved with this proposal. Additional landscaping will be added up front. And again, this is 19 parking stalls for the office area and for visitors to the site. There is an existing access point off of Lady Bird Lane in this area now. That will be closed and relocated farther to the east in this area. Will also be secure, so this is for employees and specific deliveries and so forth that have access to the backyard. There would be replacement of the existing fence that secures the yard. It would also discontinue access from this front area back into the maintenance yard as the fence will run along this area. There is space for deliveries, for deliveries to parts or the office that don't need to come into the maintenance yard, and it gives the applicant a little better sense of security than what exists today. Additional parking for mechanical technicians and other employees are proposed behind the building in this area. As I said, the total amount of parking is satisfied with the requirements. Here's a site plan of what's being proposed. As I indicated, there is a building that exists here now. That would be removed. Additional green space and plantings would be added on this north end. This strip along the west property line exists as gravel, hard-packed dirt. This would be converted to turf grass, as well as a significant amount of plantings up front to increase the curb appeal of the site, and plantings in front of the office building, again, to increase the curb appeal of the site and give the building a newer You can see in this proposal, this is the existing one-story, this is, I believe, 13 feet in height, the existing office building. There is a portion of the existing building that would remain. This is 23 feet in height. And then finally, you're seeing the 23,000 square foot addition in this area. These are large overhead doors designed to handle more specifically that heavy equipment that's coming in, larger clearance heights and so forth. The applicant is proposing very heavy-duty cranes within this shop to help with maintenance, repair, and so forth. Staff has viewed RDO similar to a new car facility. Not only are they selling vehicles, but they've got a large parts area and parts distribution. They service these vehicles for their customers. Some come onsite. Sometimes RDO is traveling to service the vehicles where they're at, as well as they are also getting into the long-term lease arrangements for these vehicles. So there is constant influx of equipment in and out of the site, and an improved service bay and shop area is really important to their long-term viability. The proposed shop addition is 30 feet in height. As you noted, may have noted in the report, this is a metal panel system. It is an insulated metal panel, so it's not, not something you would see for an agricultural building, but it is, it's not consistent with the zoning requirements that we would typically see in the GIM, which would be a precast panel or a block, brick, some combination thereof. From the applicant's standpoint, they view this as a building that will be coming down in 20 years. It needs to serve its purpose, but there's also economic factors that will play into that. Staff included a condition that we also see the timeframe, the limited timeframe on this building. We also want something aesthetically pleasing and something that will enhance the property. Thus, we had required the texture, some type of texture be placed on this panel system. Were recommend, or had included that it would just need to be the east facade of the building facing Dupont. In talking with the applicant, that's not feasible from a construction standpoint. It needs to be the whole shop area or nothing with this textured skin on it. I know that's a concern of theirs, that condition, and it may be something the planning commission may want to discuss as part of the recommendation. Here's a look at the signage plan. It's certainly appropriate for the project. This is an existing sign that's on the site today. Additional wall signs. Staff did indicate there were some issues with the design of the Itachi cabinet sign. We can address that at the time of sign permit or building permit in the future. Overall, staff is very supportive of the design. We feel the length of time included is compromised, certainly a little bit later than what the city would like to see for redevelopment or the end of that interim use permit. From the applicant's standpoint, I think it's a little bit sooner than they'd like to see the interim use permit come to an end. But I know, I know they'll have a few comments to cover with the building materials. Staff also included the 75 days once that IUP comes to an end. That is somewhat of an arbitrary number. We're all in agreement that the buildings need to come down. If that was a few weeks earlier or later due to weather at the time, we're certainly open to that. Obviously, we're planning 20 years out, and a lot can change between now and then. There are eight conditions listed in your report. We do have representatives from RDO here. If there are questions I can't answer, and commissioners, it is a public hearing. I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Slaney. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Slaney to start out with? Mr. Julie?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of questions, Chris. The park dedication, we seem to have that issue a few times. It's already platted, right? And it's already there? Shouldn't the park dedication fees have already been paid?
They have, the property has been platted. There has been no park dedication fees paid previously. In this situation, it is not a change in use, as RDOs can, remaining on the site, it's much different than a full redevelopment than we'd have RDO selling to a different user or an office building.
But historically, the park development fees weren't paid, but now they would be under the current ordinance? So I'm just trying to find out, figure out whether they were abated or delayed or...
They, I can't tell you why they weren't paid. More likely, on error from the city rather than the applicant. They should have been paid at the time of the plat. They weren't. Staff doesn't feel that the proposed is an increase that would trigger park dedication.
Okay. And then the, the combination of the two lots would normally be done by replating, but the PUD is a equivalent or acceptable method?
Actually, that is a completely separate track. When we, when staff is dealing with two platted lots that either need to be combined or one lot that can be split into two others, the limit, I believe, is the creation or the combination of two lots. That can actually be done at a staff level.
Oh, okay. So this doesn't need to come through this body?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Correct. It would be a different story if they were two meets and bounds lots that the applicant was trying to combine.
Okay. And then, in a number of areas, well, actually, in all the deviations, I think the report indicates that staff is supportive of all the deviations, but it, there's not, or maybe I didn't, maybe I didn't associate with it, but it's not clear to me why or why staff feels supportive of those, and that might be insightful for us as we look at the application.
Absolutely. Let me, let me go through that list. There are a few details I can get into. The first, well, the first is not necessarily a deviation. It's an approval process through the PUD to allow multiple buildings. The reduction in green space, again, as you can, if I can get to the site. The facility utilizes a lot of that yard. The applicant has done a nice job of adding additional square footage for green space, but at the same time, understanding they do want to grow and continue to grow over the next few years while they're still operating. They do not want to tie their hands or significantly reduce the amount of usable surface that they have. Again, it's not, it's not bituminous or concrete because of the weight of the vehicles. Staff feels there, there is a compromise with their agreement to redevelopment and removal of the buildings long-term. Same with, let's see, the other two related to parking lot, green space. The reconfiguration of this office and visitor parking lot does improve that slightly. Well, let me get to... There, again, not wanting to tie their hands on usable area within this. I don't, it's difficult to necessarily call this a parking lot in the true sense of a word, where there's delineated drive aisles and so forth. From a building perimeter standpoint, staff feels the very nature of that shop addition with overhead doors on both sides really limits the applicant to adding green space to that.
All right. Thank you. And then, I guess, one last question. The site itself will serve as surety for the demolition, and I don't know if it would be the development agreement or conditional use agreement or something, but that will be reviewed by legal to have the appropriate teeth and so on?
Correct. That's where, actually, that's where the language is right now with the city attorney crafting that. You are correct. From standard practice, from staff's report, staff's standpoint, we would get a financial security at this time to be held for X number of years until those buildings came down. From the applicant's standpoint, that's 20 years and quite a lot of capital that would be tied up. Rather than tying up those monies, they're agreeable to specific language that would tie up the property to ensure those buildings are torn down.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's a very creative solution and a good solution for such a long-term thing. There's no need to get a bank guarantee or tie up additional money. I think that's a good solution. Thank you. That's all I had.
Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, a couple of things. I just want to follow up on Commissioner Julie's first question about, let's see, the condition four says park dedication is not due with this application as it is an interim use and there is no change in use. Park dedication fees will be due in the future on these parcels if required by ordinance. Do we really need condition four?
Not necessarily.
Because the first part doesn't, it says it's not, nothing is due.
Correct.
The second part, if, if, if any changes happen, then like any other business or any other parcel, they will have to pay.
Correct. Correct. Mr. Chair Commissioners, that's strictly a housekeeping note in there, more so for future buyers that might be looking at the site that come across this. Is it pertinent to the, to the project? Not necessarily.
I understand. Your second point was regarding green space. As you know, Chris, I'm always concerned about that. This is a big project. It's seven acres of land. And with that, I know the applicant is trying to revitalize the plot with business, and they have been great business partners in our city, and we are lucky to have them. I'm wondering if there's a possibility of the green space, the required green space is 30%, and they're, they're coming up with 18.5. To me, that's significant. In a huge seven-acre plot, I'm wondering if something could, they could not do something to increase the green space, mean to add to aesthetics, you know, around the buildings or so, if something like that can be happened, can be done. Have you had any discussion with them regarding that?
Certainly. Mr. Chair Commissioners, staff has worked with the applicant, and they've responded to our, our concerns, giving the front of the parcel or the front of the property along Dupont additional green space and plantings to give it that curb appeal. I would say there's not a lot of improvement along Lady Bird Lane, but also, if you look at some of the other adjacent properties, they're in a similar, they're at a similar point in their redevelopment or their long-term use of the property. I can't speak for the applicant. I think if it was the addition of a few thousand square feet of green space here or there, they would be open to it. But from the staff's standpoint, again... uh, they would be open to it. Uh, but from the staff's standpoint, again, we see this as an existing site with some nominal improvements being made, uh, with a long-term vision.
Um, if I may, it's not common to have a twenty-year PUD in an, uh, in an MRQ area.
Correct.
And I know you did mention that staff has given thought to that. What would happen if the MRQ development requires some changes at RDO, the area, the plot? Is there a possibility that could happen? And if that happens, what, 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 what will RDO do or what will we require RDO to do?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, to be honest, I don't see, I don't see significant improvements, uh, in that area prior to the expiration of this interim use permit.
Yeah, I just want to be, I, I want to feel comfortable. I mean, uh, recommend to the city council something for twenty years. But I, I take you, what you and staff are recommending and, and I'm okay with that.
And, and keep in mind, as, uh, Commissioner Julik said, we're not looking at the plat now, but these are platted piece of, pieces of property. We have easements in place. This isn't a piece of property that's encroaching or doesn't have the proper right-of-way, things like that. I don't see the, the width or, um, yeah, I don't see the width or significant changes to DuPont Avenue happening at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Brederich?
Just a couple, um, the twenty-year interim use permit, Chris, is that, was that a compromise? I think you had mentioned that maybe they were looking for thirty or something and you, and this, and the staff compromised the twenty. Can you tell us a little bit about how, where you landed there?
Certainly. Uh, when initial discussion started, uh, with RDO, staff was in the ten to twelve year range. I, I can't speak for RDO, but I know they'd like to be there longer than twenty years. So we got to the, really, the point of the matter is, um, having an end date for the project or for that facility and having the benefit of those buildings coming down. So we're dealing with, um, uh, prime green space or prime vacant land that's ready to be developed.
Which is really only seven years difference between it and, uh, the, the IUPs we have for people that are just managing soil and they didn't have the investment that these folks are going to have.
That is true. And again, keeping in mind, um, the, the, uh, soil stockpiling, that is not requiring buildings be up and, uh, and, uh, full of office employees at that time. That just means they need to have their pads corrected and, uh, like, like this facility, open or available for redevelopment.
Standard depreciation for this building is going to be thirty years, so, you know, they're, they're, they're cutting ten years off the life. Do we talk a little, just briefly about, uh, today they have some display pads and we've recently had that in front of us. From the plan that's in front of us, do those display pads, will they continue?
Correct.
I understand the gravel versus the concrete thing. In s, in some cases, their equipment, you won't allow them to get it up on concrete as they tear it up. Um, uh, those will stay and those will continue to be gravel?
Correct. Uh, that, the area, by happenstance, there aren't vehicles sitting here now, but this is the display area. Staff hasn't, uh, received complaints or issues from those vehicles. It's new equipment, well-kept. Um, again, it's consistent with some of the other land uses in the area for outdoor display.
There was one piece of equipment sitting there when I, so, um, to the green space, um, I, I just got a quick question. You mentioned in here, um, I, I, I understand the green space. First of all, I refer back to the twenty-year, they're going to tear it down thing, so I have a, I, I get a lot of this. But, um, the stormwater management, um, actually, you know, anybody else that's doing a complete renovation would, or, I'm sorry. If we had someone that was not asking for a twenty-year IUP, but were asking for a, a major renovation, would we have required them to abate stormwater on site? Because the background tells us the stormwater goes to a city pond.
Correct.
Can, can you shed some light on that for me, the differences maybe?
Absolutely. To, first, let me give you a little background. Um, again, it, it is gravel on the site, but there's been equipment traveling on this gravel for quite a while. We view this, the entire area almost as hard surface, paved hard surface, because that's about as much water as permeating into the ground. Uh, so that is not much of a change there. With the applicant adding some green space, we see a benefit. For the details on the pond and why, I'm going to let Mr. Hillgardner get that. And, you know, he made this trip just so he could answer some stormwater questions, so.
Thanks, Chris. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, as far as the stormwater goes, um, this, this site would not be treated any differently whether it was an interim use per, permit or a, a full redevelopment. The regional pond that the stormwater is, is intended to go to was designed for that purpose, to help the MRQ area, um, to, to, to develop without having to put ponds on each individual parcel. So that, that pond was kind of designed for that purpose in the first place, to allow several of these sites down there to drain to this pond. It currently does drain to that pond. Again, um, i, they're not creating more than an acre of disturbance anyhow, so they wouldn't be required even if it was a complete redevelopment to, uh, have ponding on that site. But again, the idea of going to a regional pond is really to benefit this, this whole MRQ area, so.
Thank you. Uh, and then, um, I do, um, the access on the DuPont, it looks like we've eliminated, there's, there's two accesses now into the parking lot, which is shared into the, the back lot. And I, I do, I see this as a real positive. The, I would assume all of the big trucks and the equipment are going to be coming off of Lady Bird now, because that's the access to the yard. And I, I, I think we'll see some increased traffic on DuPont, it, you know, as soon as the city makes the changes to Cliff.
Correct.
Um, and completes the five and thirteen, DuPont's going to be kind of a major thoroughfare, so. You had mentioned that we were kind of isolating the dock from the yard. Was that a city request? Or was that the applicant's request where the, the dock and the, to get back into the trucks was coming through the parking lot versus the yard?
Commissioners, that was driven by the applicant and their, I think their long-term needs for the site.
I thought that might have, that, that, that looked to me like that might cause the applicant some issues, so. And then the, um, my last one. Number five, uh, we're the, we're requiring to record the lot combination with Dakota County. Is that, once again, kind of just a, a housekeeping thing? Because w, i, is it going to be replatted into one?
It wa, it won't be replatted, but the two lots will be combined into one. New tax ID number and a lot of processing that needs to occur at Dakota County. And we're certainly doing our best to run all these parallels so they, we come to an end game at the same time. But just in case there's a few days here or there, we want to make sure the proper documents are taken care of. It's very similar to, uh, a project we did for Twin Cities Orthopedic, um, their site on McAndrew's Road. Those lots were combined, uh, by waiver of subdivision and we just had that condition in there to make sure it was all taken care of.
Sure, that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Tahiri?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, you might, Chris, you may have already answered this question, but I just want to clarify, um, for, for the panel's purpose and myself. I don't see much, uh, improvement or upgrade to the exterior of the existing building. It basically remains as it is with exception of some paints, painting or, or, uh, minor, minor upgrades. Is the existing building as it sits, does that meet all the city, uh, ordinance requirements as far as the setbacks, heights, colors, uh, and everything else?
Good question. Uh, Mr. Chair Commissioners, it, it does satisfy the ordinance requirements. Uh, it is a somewhat nondescript building and, um, that's what RDO is continuing to, to go down that road. I think with some of the landscaping and, and improvements, it will dress it up a little bit. But really, uh, they're focusing their investments on the back or the west half of that building with the, with the shop addition. I think that's where their needs occur, um, for their mechanics and their techs to properly, uh, address their customer needs. There, as you said, there, there will be, uh, some paint, uh, uh, this parapet wall will be, uh, painted silver, just give, to give it a, a fresher look. That will match, um, the other, in, the other painting improvements to the site.
Uh, what, next question, uh, you mentioned on, on the, uh, on the description here, Chris, a six-foot chain link fence.
Correct.
Is that, uh, standard for security purpose or?
It, it's a, yeah, it's a pretty standard, standard height fence. For when we get into, uh, commercial and industrial, I know some areas, uh, go up to eight feet. I believe six is what they have out there now.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Any other, uh, questions? Um, Mr. Slenia, I have hopefully just, uh, maybe one or two here. On the, the exterior of the new shop, um, could you explain a little bit more what kind of, uh, material they're proposing or what they would like versus what the staff's proposing?
Certainly. Uh, the applicant at this point is proposing a, um, insulated metal panel, so there is some, um, energy-saving costs and so forth. It is, uh, e, economic, um, metal finish. It's not textured in any way. It's not, uh, a galvanized shiny metal, but, um, there is, um, it's a very industrial or commercial look. That is not consistent with the ordinance. The GIM ordinance allows you to have portions of the building in metal only as accents rather than a primary exterior material. From staff's standpoint, it is a significant increase in cost, but there's the ability to, to skin or provide a texture on the outside of that metal. Again, it softens it a little bit and gets away from the industrial look of the building. Staff's done that. Um, there's actually a, a, um, city building not too far from, from this site we use for, uh, pre, pre-treatment of our, uh, water that comes out of the quarry. That's a insulated panel, metal panel building with some type of, uh, uh, texture to it like Ephys or Staco.
So the staff's proposal would be to essentially modify the, the panels they're proposing as opposed to a, to completely different kind of panel?
Correct. It, it is a, it is a, it's a minor, it, it's a minor and major change from a cost standpoint and how they're building the building, which again drives the economics of it.
Sure. And, and the texturing, i, is your understa, and obviously we, well, we can propose or ask the applicant here, but from your understanding, is just the texturing even more expensive? Obviously, getting the different panels would be more expensive, but just what you're proposing, is you're understanding that's fairly significant?
Correct. On a, on a building of, of this size, it would be significant.
That's all I have. Any, is that prompting questions?
Alright, thank you. Um, I think we, I'm sure we have some questions for the applicant.
Jeff is here with RDO Equipment. Uh, he's, he's been the project lead. I'm sure he can answer some of the questions that you have and, and, um, I'll be available also.
Thank you. Please, uh, step forward and give us your name and address for the, the Commissioners, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Jeff Shawman. I'm with Profit Limited Partnership. We're a division of RDO Equipment Company. Maybe just to start real bri, briefly to give you a company overview. Uh, our company owns sixty-two stores throughout the country. We also own fifteen stores in Russia and as well as about twenty stores in Australia. Uh, in the US, we're the largest John Deere dealer. Uh, we represent approximately ten percent of all the construction equipment for John Deere and about two percent of their agricultural side of things. So some of our stores are construction like this one, some are agricultural. Uh, here in town, uh, this is one of our, uh, more aged-looking facilities. This store today does not necessarily represent our corporate image as a company throughout the country. And we're here today to hopefully change that image a little bit. And, and, uh, uh, over the course of the last, uh, few months, we've had ongoing dialogue and a great relationship with your city staff. And I, I have to compliment, uh, you and them, uh, on the relationship. It, uh, I go to a lot of cities and there's not many cities where the staff actually wants to understand what the issues are from your side of the table, so we appreciate that. The store today, uh, employs about fifty people. Uh, the expansion would allow us to add ten-plus additional employees because of the added shop space. Though as added jobs are probably the higher end of our pay scale, our average employment, uh, wage range is forty to sixty-five plus thousand dollars a year. Uh, so we believe we bring, you know, decent-paying jobs to the community. Uh, it certainly takes a certain skill set to, to operate some today's high-tech equipment. With respect to the project itself then, uh, uh, this facility, as I said, beyond being aesthetically out of date and, you know, brown brick and, and, you know, top pa, painted, uh, parapet material, uh, it's also losing its functionality for us. Equipment today is getting bigger and taller and heavier and it just takes a different kind of structure and a different kind of crane to service that industry. And so, uh, we have, uh, when we came to city staff and, and tonight to you, uh, our hope is that we can make a significant investment in the property, understanding that we have a window of time to capture that cost and to, and to somehow amortize that cost. So, uh, the cost consideration for us has really driven the dialogue about what that timeframe needs to be just from an economic standpoint. I mean, this is purely an economic-driven, uh, project for us. In pure numbers, the expansion and the improvements to the property represent about four million dollars of, of, uh, improvements. That's, that's, that's my budget. Uh, I don't think I'm going to get there because the store keeps asking for more things. Uh, but, but that's our target. That's the economic model that makes sense for us is for this size building to cost four million dollars, uh, over that twenty-year term. We have, uh, worked, as I said, cooperatively with your staff to, to find a way, uh, to improve the site, albeit in some cases, minor improvements, uh, so that for the next twenty years, we are an image that, that we can be proud of. And I think that the city can point to and say, this is a good interim use of the property. The owners agreed to raise the buildings at the end of the time so that the city's vision can be realized. And so, you know, we believe we can be, uh, a good partner in that effort. There, there's, there's several things, how do I go forward here? I'm going to use Chris's PowerPoint. Uh, there, there's several things we think that's going to help aesthetically. Uh, the building today, as I said, is, is brown brick. Uh, our corporate image, and I don't know if anyone's had an opportunity to go to our website before your, um, this meeting, but our corporate image is very much, uh, more modern tones of charcoals and grays and silver. Uh, so, so the building we've represented is, is, uh, has those. So if you look at this, the front of the building, that front of the building, uh, is really the focal point, which isn't hidden by all the landscaping. So we tend to focus our energies on that sector, on that portion of the building. Uh, the Ephys, or, excuse me, the, the parapet wall, which is kind of around the top of the offices, that's not just a painted material, that's actually a decorative, uh, dimensional product. So it physically has, uh, I'll call it aluminum, like a brushed aluminum look, uh, that is six inches and then it recesses for six inches and goes back and forth. And it really creates a nice visual, uh, appearance. Uh, it looks a little more commercial than industrial in nature. It looks a little more commercial than industrial in nature. And we typically have built our shops with a rigid metal panel, to the commissioner's question. That metal panel is white, it's nondescript, there's no mistake. However, what we find at our locations and architects find is that white appearance makes the building fade away and doesn't become the focal point. So imagine driving up to a store and you have the offices with this darker image that has architectural treatment, and the white building kind of fades away, right? And so rather than make that white building a textured material which looks like EPHIS or a TIP wall, concrete construction, we prefer to have it fade away. So everything that's on your staff reports recommendation. We've worked through, we've tried to agree to everything we possibly can, but that metal panel has a cost impact, and that cost impact is approximately $100,000. So we're out to bid today with several local contractors. We'll know that exact number in more detail soon, but in our past experience, changing the system from a rigid metal panel to a textured insulated metal panel is about $100,000 decision. So as I said, it's economics for us. How do we depreciate that investment over whatever life you're willing to give us? So we're not opposed to spending the money, but it's economics, and so our counter-request would be, would you consider 21 years or 22 years to help us recapture some of that So in a nutshell, that's our request is, we're hopeful, and at the picture on your screen, I don't know if you have it in front of you, we've intentionally put additional landscaping to hide and shield the front of that building, so that, I guess it would be south-facing or southeast-facing wall, that that's the wall I believe that staff had recommended we use this different panel on. That's the one side of the building that we're actually trying to hide so that people can't see into the shop and see what's going on. No one wants to really see our mechanics working on equipment. So we believe that that screening, especially from an automobile and pedestrian level, that that screening will drastically help that you won't necessarily even see that building facade. So I've spoken a lot, I've probably spoken quickly. I'm here to address any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you very much, commissioners. Any questions come to mind?
The landscaping, I believe, helps a lot. Is it a Butler building? What's the manufacturer? What are you putting up?
We're open. Typically, we're NIC brand, which serves a variety, so metallic buildings. So it's a Butler-style building. We do have some Butler buildings in our building repertoire.
So the finish on the steel is just a white finish, and the finish, because 70% of the facade is doors, so the doors are white. Am I correct?
Correct.
A good, we have summer here for two or three months sometimes, and so the majority of the time, I would assume those doors will be open.
In the summer, they will be.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Shawman? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
This is a public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing at this time for anyone who has any questions or comments, if they would step forward at this time. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing at this time. Commissioners, I would open for discussion at this time. Mr. Julik?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for Chris. You know, we're seeing a few applications in the MRQ area, GIM area, I don't know which one to call it, but, and we talk about the future. I mean, they're asking for a couple of extra years in order to go with the more, with the preferred solution by city staff. You indicated earlier in the conversation that it's doubtful that there would be anything significantly pushing for the redevelopment, you know, 20 years out from here. Have we talked about an end game? Because at some point in time, as we get closer and closer to, let's pick a nominal year of 2030, you're going to potentially be seeing applications where the applicant or owner doesn't really know the end game. I mean, have we thought about addressing that and what will happen as we get closer to that redevelopment? Has there been discussion with staff on that?
There has been, to some extent, commissioners. There are a number of exterior display and storage uses down there now. So we're dealing with non-conforming uses that are grandfathered in. They will be able to continue, but won't be able to expand substantially or be able to change much. On the other side of the spectrum, just a couple of blocks away, on the other side of Dupont in Lady Bird, we have sites that are moving ahead of schedule on soil remediation and are left with buildable, building pads, buildable lots that are up for sale. So any new, any use that goes in there, that would be the end game. That would be the long-term office, office warehouse buildings, hopefully no more outdoor storage, but a long-term use there. I would agree that RDO is really the first one, not really the first one in the door, but we're looking at immediate redevelopment. They are the only ones in this neighborhood looking to do that. I would also say, from a staff standpoint, if the planning commission's entertaining the materials and the timeframe and so forth, I think from a staff standpoint, we'd like to stick with the 20 years, and if the planning commission council are open, look at a different material, then elongate or expand that 20-year timeframe. The applicant, as with any interim use permit, if we're 15 years from now and things are moving faster or slower than expected, the applicant has the ability to come back, request extensions, or make adjustments at that time. But from a staff standpoint, if we could move ahead knowing right now 20 years is the end date, we see that as a benefit.
But even, even in the situation, call it, let's say, 20 plus or minus two years, even in that situation, you have, at the city's discretion, once this, let's say this was approved, then you have much more teeth now, after that's approved, than you have today. Because right, if I look at it today, their current use could be grandfathered in perpetuity.
Absolutely.
So even the fact that if you went to 22 years, there would be a benefit to the city and its long-term goals in that you still have the end game at 22 years where, at the city's discretion, if the whole area was kind of in the redevelopment phase, they'd have to go along because this interim use would end.
And I think that's, to some of the earlier questions, why staff's supportive of the landscape deviations and so forth, because it's a great benefit to have RDO at the table, whether it's 18, 20, or 22 years, that's a great benefit rather than them not applying for anything, and as you said, we're just in a grandfathered status.
Okay. And even, and I'm just picking up on something you said earlier, is, you know, they're doing a modest amount of redevelopment here. Is what they're doing consistent with the, kind of the city's end goals for that specific area? Not entirely, but more or less the use, you know, if that facility was completely conforming 20 years from now, would that be an appropriate use for, or intended use for that area?
No, no, because of their, because of that, because of that heavy equipment, that outdoor storage area, it is, it's still a great length from compliance with the ordinance.
So what would, what would we be looking to place in that area?
It would be, to be honest, it'd be more office warehouse distribution area. Not necessarily that, that heavy equipment repair and service is a bad land use, but it's not what we intended for that district.
Okay. Just want to, that helps quite a bit. Thank you.
Mr. Bradrick?
Chris, the goal of MRQ obviously is to have it mirror a little more what we have with the South Cross District that's coming off of TIFF right now, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I have, I forgot. Can I ask the applicant another question?
Sure.
I'm sorry, Jim.
If you would step forward just briefly.
Can you, because this is kind of odd and new for us. So you, you have any other developments as a company where you have a planned end date of 20? I mean, what's the typical, you know, there's, I know retail has specific end life because the property is, you know, not viable anymore. Is there, so does the 20-year end date, have you done this anywhere else? Is this, is this new for you? What is your plan? I guess 20 years out is a bit of a, you know, to be assuming a fair amount, but 20 years out, would you be looking to still stay in Burnsville, but maybe go farther out with more land and, because you're landlocked?
Mr. Commissioner, thank you. With respect to your question, this is the first time in my history, I think, Skip, that we will have an end date of 20 years. Typically, we will go buy a piece of land, we will stay there indefinitely. This site, being seven acres, is a very small site for us. So in 20 years, our goal, assuming you don't let us stay there, is to find another piece of land in this market.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Sorry to drag you back up.
Any other thoughts or questions on, Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, Mr. Chair, commissioners, I think staff has worked, has done an excellent job working with the applicant. The applicant has said that. Chris's presentation to us was very exhausting. I think the applicant is comfortable, from what I gather, with the 20-year sunsetting of this. And I, first of all, would like to commend RDO for being a very responsible and a good partner in this city. They've been there for a while, they've done a good job, and I think we, I will ask commissioners to support this application, and let's make a recommendation as presented by staff to the city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Any other questions or comments at this time? Mr. Julik?
Yeah, my concern, thank you, Chair. My concern about just going ahead, approving it as is or taking a vote as is, I believe the applicant has indicated that the, there is a slight difference between the applicant and staff specifically with requests to the exterior of the new addition there, whether that metal surface is coated with some type of textured coating or not. And I think he's indicated that an extension of one or two years to the, to the life of the approval would more or less pay for that, pay for the additional cost to do the coating on the metal panel, if I understand correctly what the applicant and staff have discussed. It seems like, I mean, I think for us to do our job, we should probably kind of weigh in on those items. For me personally, and given the fact that there was no, if today it's grandfathered, there is no end game, to the point of post-approval, there is a definitive end game. And I think the compromise then is that, is that we in the city get the, a building shell that's more appropriate to the vision of the city, and then you extend that application one or two years. Me personally, I think the advantage of having the end game, having a little bit nicer exterior or an exterior more compliant with city code is probably worth the trade-off for a one or two-year extension of the 20 years. I haven't been involved in all the discussions. Maybe we got to the 20 years because of the staff was already looking at the, at that type of exterior. I don't, I don't know that, but I think in our job as planning commissioners, we should at least probably weigh in on that subject and not leave it up to city council to adjudicate that matter. So I'll express my opinion, and I think I did, but just to summarize, I guess I'm okay with looking at a slight extension to that in exchange for the coated metal exterior and the, and the end game sometime from now. That's my position on that.
Commissioner Bradrick?
Thank you, Chair. I guess I'd also like to thank the applicant. I'm really excited about this renovation. We, I think they're coming to us at a time when we're trying to put together our plan in that area, and what they're doing to the property will just help with the future renovations in MRQ. So I may vary slightly from the other commissioners. I would be supportive of removing the specifics of the exterior of the building for a couple reasons. One, we have a 20-year end game. That's a $500 a month or $400 and some dollar a month charged over the 20 years to upgrade it. I believe they did an excellent job with landscaping in front of the building, so I also agree that you're not going to see much of the building. And to Chris's point, it's far more important to me that we have, we have some sort of end. I also, as the applicant said, hopefully in 20 years, seven acres isn't enough for them. You know, they would pull away from the site, and hopefully we have some location for them and we don't lose that, lose that partner. But I would be in support of not having the upgrade on the building. I believe there's, have managed facilities like this. There's a minimal amount of the building that's actually exposed with the garage doors in the building. They've hid it with the trees and the additional costs for a building that's eventually going to come down, and I would rather stay with the 20-year.
Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I said earlier, I think the 20-year is reasonable. I assume that staff has given thought and have discussed that upgrade that Commissioner Julik is talking about, and if staff has not given thought to it and want to advise us differently, I'm going to listen to that. But I agree with Commissioner Bradrick that we leave it as it is and make a recommendation to the city council. Thank you.
Commissioner Julik?
Point of clarity, Commissioner Bradrick isn't suggesting that we leave it as it is. He's suggesting that we eliminate condition number eight.
I understand that. What I meant, the 20-years.
Okay, 20-years, but you're in favor of eliminating condition number eight? That is for the textured metal panel?
I know what it is. It's stated here. No, I'm not, I'm for condition number eight.
You want to keep it as is?
Keep it, yes.
You want it as structured right now?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Tejiri?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to, again, support, express my support on this project. However, I agree with Commissioner Julik. According to these plans, we have compromised we have compromised on the landscape percentage based on city ordinance, and so I'm fully supportive of all eight conditions to be, to be amended and attached to the approval of this proposal.
Thank you, Commissioner Taheri. My, my position in this is, I guess, either with Commissioner Bradrick or Commissioner Julik, I would go with either one. Addressing, I, I think we have to go back to what we're starting with, which is, from my understanding, they could keep and stay as is right now, which obviously is a lot less green space than would be putting in currently if we move forward on, on this. We would have a lot less landscaping, there's a number of, of trees, shrubs, that sort of thing going in on the front of the building, some, some landscaping there. So essentially, if they wanted to, they could just stay as is and we only have fifteen percent green space versus eighteen percent, or eighteen and a half. So that's an upgrade of what we're getting that way. Frankly, as the applicant has, I think, indicated, most of the time when a business goes in, especially a business, I would imagine such as this where there is a, quite a bit of capital outlay in the sense of the building, a lot, twenty-three thousand, I think, square foot building, that's a large capital outlay, that's amortized, I think, correctly, as Commissioner Bradrick said, over thirty years, they're only getting twenty years, they're, we're putting an end on it. What it comes down to for a business is dollars and cents. I mean, they have to make their return on capital, or else it just doesn't make sense for them. Now, we have a development that is being upgraded, improvements are being made, maybe they're, they don't meet the standards that we would like if we were starting from scratch, but we're not starting from scratch. And so what we have is something that's better, something that's adding ten-plus jobs that are well-paid jobs into the community, and a hundred thousand dollar cost, which in something like this, again, it's dollars and cents. We have to, I think, as a city and as a Commissioner, be very cognizant of what we're looking at when we put conditions on businesses that we wanna partner with. For those reasons, I would be there supportive of the two-plus years and/or taking condition eight out as far as the white, keeping it white. I think with the, I would personally favor just keeping it white and keeping it twenty years. I think that's more in line of what the city's looking for with the MRQ going forward, as expressed. I, I think with the landscaping and the way this is being designed, I don't think that's giving away too much, and so that would be my, sort of, way of looking at this, at this time.
With those comments, any other questions or discussions?
None for me, Chair.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Julik.
Can I make a motion?
You can.
I move that Planning Commission recommend to the City Council approval of the application for a planned unit development amendment to allow a twenty-year interim use permit for open storage, sales, and display of heavy equipment, and a building addition for the existing RDO facility located at 12500 Dupont Avenue with the conditions as listed in the, with the, in the, uh, present, report, excluding condition eight.
Any second to that?
I second that.
Motion moved by Commissioner Julik, seconded by Commissioner Bradrick. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Three ayes, all in favor, say no.
As a Chair, I think, I think this Commissioners are at a disadvantage here. We should at first decide what we want to do, there is a recommendation that we drop condition eight. I would like to support this application. But with, with the dropping of condition eight, I cannot support it. And that's not fair to the applicant and fair to the Commission. Let's talk first about whether we want, let's come to a consensus where we, we can all say, yeah, let's drop eight, and then we go with it with seven conditions.
Okay.
Or we agree that we can keep the eight and then go with that.
All right, I'm...
If you, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair?
That's fine.
Open a discussion on Commissioner Julik's recommendation that we drop eight.
That's fine, well, I'm willing to, I'm willing to look at it. I, I guess I'm in support of it, I think I've, I've stated that, so.
I think I'm in support of it, I've expressed my, my reasons why, so I, I would defer to you to...
Mr. Chair, can I ask Staff, Mr. Slenia, your, what you have to say on this?
As I said, Commissioners, we see a number of benefits through this application. Obviously, Staff would prefer to see the upgraded material, but knowing which way the Planning Commission is leaning or considering, I would say Staff is more comfortable sticking with the twenty-year, the slightly shorter timeframe, which still gives RDO the ability to extend or request an extension in the future, rather than the upgraded materials in a couple more years.
Listening to Staff, Mr. Chair, I would support that we drop condition eight.
Okay.
I think it's a very responsible business partner we have in the city, and whatever we can do to help them, I appreciate Commissioner Julik bringing that point up, and I'm supportive of that we drop eight.
Okay. Commissioner Taheri, any comments on that, your position?
I personally, I'm not in support of that. I would like, I prefer to maintain condition eight, as I'm sure City has thought through this deeply, have gone through all the pros and cons and strong reasons why it is there. As a Commissioner, I, I can't see myself just take it out for the, for the approval purpose only, even for future projects that come in front of us. So my vote would be nay.
All right. Any other comments on Mr. Commissioner Julik's proposal at this time?
I agree, I, I voted with it, I, I believe as we look at the whole package, the, I'm making a substantial investment, the majority of the building is doors, so those are gonna be white. You know, I, I might feel differently if it was a, a solid facade, you know, but they're not gonna, you, you can't go get different colored doors. And like I said, I think that the, the end date, which I had a little hard time wrapping my head around, you know, building a building and tearing it down in twenty years as we started to read this, but it, it kinda gets us where we're currently going with the city, and in reality, in twenty years, the facility, if they've been successful, seven acres is a little small given the size of equipment they're dealing with. So I think it's kind of a win-win for both the city and the, and the applicant, so I would be in support of Mr. Julik's.
All right. Everybody comfortable with Mr. Julik's motion at this time then? We will, I think just call for a revote? Revote? With the proposed... Right, with, we'll ask for a revote with the proposal as expressed by Commissioner Julik and seconded by Commissioner Bradrick. All in favor, say aye? Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
That would pass four-one. And this will go to the council on October eighth. Good luck, thank you very much for coming here, appreciate your time. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for WW, I'm sorry, WPPV, Eleven Woods Burnsville LLC, application for a planned unit development amendment to raise and reconstruct the pool building at the Woods Apartment located at 14701 Portland Avenue South. Mr. Slenia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Apologize, let me get to the right spot with this report. It is also a planned unit development. The applicant is looking to improve their existing pool building or changing room bathroom for the Woods Apartments. The site has been in existence and approved by the city in nineteen seventy-nine. Construction started immediately after that. There have been no land use approvals or clearances since that point, so we're certainly dealing with somewhat of a dated pool building. Much of the exterior of the apartment buildings is getting refreshed, new paint. I'll let the applicant get into all the, all the details, but if you've been by the site there, putting substantial reinvestment into that piece of property and giving it somewhat of a facelift. Let me put this all in perspective, County Road forty-two, Portland Avenue, the Byer Lee's Store and the adjacent shopping center are on the opposite corner. The site area we're looking at is the northern quadrant, or northern quad, if you will. Again, here's an image of the pool deck, the pool, and the existing building. The applicant is, is going from, I think, seven hundred and thirty feet, seven hundred and twenty square feet to just over two thousand square feet. The proposed building includes men's and women's locker room, fitness center, Wi-Fi, cafe, and then also storage for pool and, uh, pool equipment. Again, because of the size of the new building, it was above the maximum limitation Staff's allowed to address within the zoning ordinance. Our approvals for administrative, uh, building permits and approvals cap out at ten percent enlargement of an existing building. We're certainly exceeding that, and thus we're into the Planning Commission and Council for public hearing. There are no deviations, the applicant has satisfied the requirements of the ordinance as well as providing a very appealing structure to enhance the property and to, to coincide with the other improvements. The paint and materials match the other improvements being made around the facility. Not to downplay the project, certainly Staff is supportive of it, but again, there are no deviations, and I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Slenia. Commissioners, any questions?
Thank you, Chair. More of a curiosity thing, Chris, and educating us and maybe the listening audience. In the ten percent increase in building size, is that for anything, like even, or just...
That is, that is for anything within, I believe, a PUD or a conditional use permit.
Okay.
If a property owner is, is looking to enlarge the building or the building cube, and in this case, they still have enough green space and parking and so forth, when that's all said and done, Staff has the ability to approve that. If it's more substantial as we're looking at here, then it's back through the Planning Commission Council.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Commissioners, Jennifer Kating, the project architect, has been here. If, if there's any questions, I know she can answer them.
Any questions for Ms. Kating? All right. This is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing at this time. Anybody who wants to comment can step forward and have a question or comment at this time. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions or...
Chair, I would, I would be supportive, I think, I, I walked the property and the owners making some substantial investments in the property. The exterior of the buildings are being upgraded, and it's in the middle of their property, you can't see it, I think it adds a great amenity to the, to the property for the residents, and since, as a city, we have struggled recently with some apartment complexes and, and maintenance, I'm, this is almost the size of a small community itself, the number of people that live in this, in this complex, and I would be, I would be supportive of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradrick. Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is in my neck of the woods, walking distance from my house. I have gone over there to visit tenants who live there. I think this pool is a necessary addition to the building because of the size of the building. Remember when it was approved years and years ago, it was smaller, the pool was much smaller. I think this will, you know, as Commissioner Bradrick has said, our public housing, our apartment buildings, you know, within the city, some of them have gone through some tough times. This is an upgrade that is necessary, and I think the tenants would enjoy it and it will add much to the livability of people in our city. Therefore, I would support it, and I ask Commissioners to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. I would also support it as well. Commissioner Taheri?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm also very supportive of this structure, I think it's very, very impressive design. I, I commend the designer, architect, and that, not as a conditions, but as a suggestions. I would, I would, just questioning the architect, if you think a few additional nightlights on the building would add to security at night, if it's very dark, hidden behind the trees with some of the events going on in the city these days, that's basically the only suggestion I have. Additional lights for security would be, I think would be plus. But other than that, it's very, very, I'm very supportive of this project.
All right. Anyone wanna make a motion or comment?
I, I will take a stab at it.
All right.
Okay, I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council for approval of the Woods Burnsville LLC application for a planned unit development amendment to raise and reconstruct the pool building at the Woods Apartments located at fourteen seven oh one Portland Avenue South, with the one, I guess, recommendation that the, the applicable pool fencing requirement shall be satisfied as part of the project.
Thank you.
Second?
Second, moved by Commissioner Bradrick, seconded by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye? Aye. All opposed? That passes five-zero, this will go to council also on October eighth. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is any, is updates, Commissioners, any updates? Staff?
Just the, the tentative agenda for October fourteenth.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, Commissioner Julik?
I'm sorry, did we have a, another, another, an item six on the...
I don't, I don't have it.
I don't have it.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, sorry.
All right.
Yep.
Okay. I don't have any other items, so I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I move, are we adjourned?
Moved by Commissioner Bradrick?
Movement seconded already.
Oh, oh.
I missed it.
I interrupted, sorry.
I've listened to Commissioner Julik. All right, I'll...
Who made the first?
Who made the first one, I missed it.
Somebody down here, I seconded.
Okay, Commissioner Bradrick moves, Commissioner Singh second, all in favor, say aye? Aye. All opposed? Passes five-zero, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.